Six o'clock, please rise for the pledge.
Hello, everyone. It's Monday the 17th. This is our regular board meeting and it's being recorded. First off, we need a motion to approve the minutes from the last board meeting of November 3rd. As amended in the in the dry folder for this, I edited. So use the one, please, in the board folder.
Already done.
I'll make a motion to accept the the November 3rd meeting minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Warrant number 11X, general, $1,134.17. Warrant number 12, general, $68,330.60. Water, $6,330.
Say that again.
Water, $6,361.73. Sewer, $188,968.77. Billings, $263,664.10. payroll number 12, $108,049.78, and there's no transfers.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, we have, we have been working with Brandon and Judy from EBC to go over what our proposed insurance plans are for 2026. As we've discussed a couple of times, the the rate for our current CDPHP plan was up 21.7%. And the coverage changed, the dynamics, I think it's fair to say, changed a little bit. So looking at some other options, Brandon, we discussed going to, if you remember, we went from a platinum CDPHP plan to a gold CDPH plan and funded the initial deductible. And that worked out well for the village. I believe it was successful with with all the members who belonged to that coverage. For this year, we have done the math. And it would be to our advantage to go to a silver plan and fund that deductible. And this is a kind of, if you look at some of the coverage amounts for for some of the, you know, the most used. I'm stealing Brandon's, you know, information here. How am I doing so far? So, but it looked, it looks like this will actually be a win for our employees. And and this is again, a bridge until we can join the Albany County Healthcare Consortium, which should happen before the end of or middle of this year. So Brandon, why don't you kind of explain how we got here?
Yeah, exactly. So we rolled out a gold plan with the deductible last in last year and funded the deductible for the employees. So it worked out very well. The vast majority of employees stayed in that deductible phase, so they didn't receive much out-of-pocket cost. The same thing will happen, I anticipate, with the silver plan. So the deductible on the gold is $1,700 for an individual. The silver plan is $2,700. So it's an extra $1,000 in deductible, which will still be paid by the village. And there's comparable copays. Some are in line with the gold. Some are down, some are flat. So it's it's very comparable to the expected out-of-pocket costs once the deductible is met. But the other nice part is moving to silver is actually a 11.7% decrease in premium. So employees are gonna have less money deducted from their paychecks. The village will pay less in premium. And the deductible funding being in place. So most employees are gonna have little to no out-of-pocket cost. We're MVP Healthcare is another local insurance company. So we, you know, we just, we look at all the plans that are out there year to year. And right now, in the small group market, MVP is is very strong, very competitive for local, local folks. So that's what we're rolling with. MVP, it's a local network, and we're also going to offer a national plan if folks want access to doctors outside of New York State. There's gonna be an option to do that as well. It's gonna be additional cost to the employees if they choose to go to that expanded network. But everybody lives locally, sees local doctors, the local MVP plan should work very well.
So we discussed this with with the Menand's PBA. And and I believe all of their members have chosen option three for MVP. So basically, we're, the village is gonna commit, if we so approve, to paying the 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 premium based on option three. If they want a national, if anyone wants a national plan, they can pay for the difference. Again, we we discussed with the PBA, the the their difference between the two. And and everyone still is 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 believing that option three is the best. So tonight, we need, because premiums start to be deducted in December for December for January coverage, the board needs to approve a health plan tonight so that we can start making those arrangements.
How does this national piece work with our retired people that take our health insurance?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So Brandon, you want to talk about those, how the retirees, how we structured the retirees piece of this?
So that's, we have, we will have the national network available to folks. So it's, it's, they, if you live outside of New York State, we can enroll those folks on the national option. Just the the piece for you to decide is how much of it is paid by the village. You know, right now, the way we're structuring it, active employees can can choose and pay the difference if they want to opt for the national plan. Everybody I've heard from is is choosing the local plan, but I mean, we have the national coverage available if folks want it. And if we need it for the retirees out of state, that's the plan that will be available to them.
What retirees do we have out of state? Under sixty, under sixty-five? Are they under sixty-five? Most of, there's only two, one or two, Brandon, am I correct? One or, is it a Gladys and Sylvia?
I believe there's, I believe there's two. I don't, I don't have the full list in front of me, but
I think it's just two.
But they can choose the national.
They can choose the national, but it's only two people. The rest of them are all in the sixty-five and all, they get Medicare.
And what is the cost difference?
So it's about $100 more to go to the national plan, $90 more per individual, per month.
And currently with the plan that we had, were we paying more for their insurance than we were?
No. The only thing difference is
We're on a national plan.
The only difference is retirees pay 12%. They don't pay the 20%. But that's something that the mayor wants to talk about.
So going forward, starting with year 2027, increasing the amount employees pay from 12%, what'd we say, 2% a year?
2% a year.
Until everybody is pays a 20% cost share, the current employees plus.
So the retired.
Correct.
The two.
Yes, starting 2%, so that everybody cost shares.
Well, we're gonna do it with the next, because there's two, there's not enough time to let them know.
So starting 2027, so people can prepare. But but the cost share increases each 2% for the next five years until we're, or sorry, four years until we're
2% of whatever the premium, monthly premium is, is that?
No, so currently retirees pay instead of a 20% contribution towards their premiums. Like, they pay 12. So next, 27, they'll pay 14, and then 28, they'll pay 16, 18, 20.
Because the police said the same thing within their contract when we had their last two contracts away, or last, not this last one, long before they increased it up every year.
So that everybody pays a 20% cost share. And no, it's not, it's not different for different groups. So the recommendation is for the village to, what, Don, what's the?
The CDPHP, free HD HDPHP, HMO, local plan. And then if they're gonna be given the option to, for the national plan, that they have to pay the cost difference. And in 2027, retirees are gonna start having to increase by 2% each year, billings reach 20%. No, no, it's reading the the PHD. HPD.
HDP.
Yeah.
HD, HP.
What's that stand for, Brandon?
What's that, Don?
The HD.
High deductible health plan?
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Why did you say that?
Say it again.
Thanks for asking, Dan. I didn't know why.
Like I said, this is a bridge to get us to the to the co-op plan, which
Can't come soon enough.
Can't come soon enough, right?
And just so everybody is aware, Brandon, well, actually Judy, with all the retirees that are on the Medicare plan, and they're all, they're all set now, right? There's no, there's no, Brandon?
Yeah, sounds like that meeting went well. Everybody's all set.
So someone want to make a motion?
Can we?
I'll make a motion. I have to make this whole motion.
Wait, hold on, before you make that motion. Are we doing? We, if that's next year, we're gonna do the, because this year is staying the same, right? Next year goes up.
Retiree starts on twenty, quick, year 27.
Are we allowed to do that behind future boards? I thought we weren't allowed to do that, or is this because it's not?
It's not, it's, my, well, it's just, this is what the increase is gonna be. So we have to, we have to be able to tell them in time.
Okay.
That's the reason we're doing it.
Right.
Because we're gonna tell them in January that next year it's gonna be, it's gonna
No, you can't encumber the board. This doesn't encumber the board. You can't.
Okay.
A new board could come in and say, no, we're going back to 12.
Right, right, yeah.
That was a good question.
Yeah.
I just have one more question, because we talked about the CDPHP was one up 21.7%, and we said this was 11.7 less than that. So what is the increase that we're actually seeing from what we currently have to switching to this plan, or is there not one at all?
There's not an increase, it's a decrease.
Is it, that 11.7 is a decrease?
So Brandon, what what was the total math? So the premiums decreased by 11%, but when we fund all of the HRA, it takes away some of that decrease, so that basically it's close to flat? Is that the way the math works?
Well, so first, the premium that you pay will go down 11.7%. And we don't, we just don't know the utilization on the deductible. So it's, you know, we don't know the total spend. But the let's see.
Brandon, can you tell them what we did this year? That would be a good way to explain it, I think, if they can.
I mean, I'm just like, compared to where you were, I mean, it's gonna save more in premium than the deductible is itself. So even if folks use all of the funds, you're still better off than where you are. And currently, the total HRA, you see, I had it, you it was let's see, about $60,000 was allocated and about $44,000 have been, have been used so far. So you know, as a percentage of the total allocated amount, you're spending about what's, you know, 75% of what's, what's available in the HRA. So it it really, you know, I don't know how much is gonna be used of the HRA amount, but overall, this
Just, just looking at the math. If you look at the math, if it's, you know, $500,000 in total premium, times 20%, that's $100,000. So if we're doubling the amount in the HRA, right, to $100,000 as total usable.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, well, the HRA is not doubling, it's the, like, the the HRA amount's not going to double. It's going up. Each individual is gonna go from 1,700, what it would have been 1,700, now it's gonna be 2,700 or from 3,400 on a family to 5,400. So the HRA allocated amount's going up, but the premium going down will more than offset that difference.
Yeah, and that's how we got to this math. It just essentially because, because the village is contributing to hedge some of the general expenses for routine care, really the insurance ends up being the contributor when somebody has something major happen. And, right, is that fair to say?
Yeah, I mean, in the, in the initial phase, as folks use their coverage, they fill a prescription or see a doctor, it's all applying towards your deductible, and that amount is being paid by the village. So it's
Right.
It's, you know, to the employees, it's a, it's a great plan. It's in in a lot of ways, it's better than, you know, a platinum plan, because most folks are gonna have little to no out-of-pocket costs. But you're paying a silver premium, and then whatever deductible amounts folks use get, get paid as well. But it's overall, it's it's lower than what you would have paid certainly on platinum and from where you are now on gold.
And the vision and dental are staying the same, and there's no increase by the way.
Correct, no change on dental or vision.
Okay. Anyone?
We're ready?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the offer of the MVP Silver Free High Deductible Health Plan, HMO Local Plan. Employees will given the option to have a national employee plan, but will have to pay the difference in cost. And starting in 2027, retirees' percentage will percentage paid will start to increase by 2% per year until they reach a 20% contribution.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brandon, for all your work.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Mary Jane's got a question, Brad.
Yes, go.
Dan sent you the lifetime benefit solution. Did you take care of that?
So
email from them saying we needed to do a
That was only if we were staying with an HRA administered through CDPHP. So since we have, yeah, we'll be setting up an HRA through MVP. So there's a separate, you can, you can disregard the lifetime benefits, and I will put together the MVP paperwork.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
How CDPHP reset goodbye?
I will. You still have your dental, though.
Okay.
Also, we're dealt these.
Well, it's, yeah, but it's, it's written through CDPHP, but
That's your world.
You finish with them on medical side, yes.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Thank you.
Bye.
What's next?
Oh, you're gonna give enough
Sewer contracts. Still working on, on that with the Town of Colony. Today, we did get some good numbers from Labella to flush out, no pun intended, exactly what the costs are for the Town of Colony's portion of our system. And it calculates out to a cost per unit of their members of $46.65.
Say that again?
I'm sorry, $46.65. We pass them for $8 for 2025 and $34.10, I think, for 2026. So we will be negotiating with them. And Labella will be meeting with them and their engineers to go over these numbers and to show them the analysis that we've done as far as cost and how we arrive at these numbers. And then we'll see what the negotiations go to from there. So but now that we have some actual
I'll be frank, you know, negotiation, I don't think is a term we should use.
I would agree.
To be honest.
I would agree. But
15 years out of contract is long enough.
Steve and the Labella team will help. I am stepping away from the the engagement, so that they can hopefully work out something. I'll have more for the board the next time we meet.
Holiday train.
Holiday train. Yeah.
Some of it changed.
So the holiday train comes a week from tomorrow, right? And November 20, 25. The train is coming later this time. It's coming at 5:15 instead of 4:15.
It's arriving at 5 o'clock, starting at 5:15.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, so 5 o'clock, and the show starts at 5:15. Yeah, okay. They took away the Saratoga stop of the train this year because they're doing train work up there on the tracks. And so they, they have plenty of time to do our show later, and so that it's dark and the lights are all you know, shiny, lighty. And and then get, and then they go to mechanic fill. Because there's one less stop this year, we do expect this show and the mechanical show to be much more crowded. So the following roads will be closed. Tillinghast, Menand Road and Cornell Drive, Jones Court will be closed off, and Villa Road will be closed off, starting
North, North Line.
Half of North Lines and the
The alleyway.
Yeah. We'll be putting out a Facebook post and on our website tomorrow with a map of what's closed and what's open. We'll be sending out the information regarding the the permits that local traffic can get in order to get access to those roads during the date. We probably will be closing because of the increased participation this year. We'll probably be closing instead of an hour early or two hours earlier. So starting at
Last year, we ran into a problem where before the police could get there, there were people coming up.
Yeah, so I think we said, what did we say?
Three.
Three. There will be parking at Castleman Electric at 279 Broadway, and we have secured buses and using the same bus route up to Clifford Road.
Can you have your, your buddy stand by in case they happen again?
Your buddy at Trailways.
Oh, yeah.
Since we're expecting more traffic and more people, can we, and I'll take the heat from my neighbors at the top of Menand Road, but can we just do no parking on both sides of the road? Let's say from like I don't know, halfway up?
Cornell, the truck is gonna be, they're gonna have those DPW trucks there.
No, I understand that. But like, if you say you're gonna close the road at 3 o'clock, right? And like, last year, it closed at 4 o'clock. People came and parked as far up Menand Road as they could get before the roads closed. So and then people are trying to stand in the road to watch it. So from like, maybe Cornell up, like, no parking on either side.
Close it at Jones Court up, from Jones Court up?
Like, just no parking, right?
Like, last year, the DPW truck that was collecting stuff was in the way of people seeing.
And maybe parked out on Cornell.
I'm just saying, no parking.
Can I put the, the DPW truck in your driveway that way so it's not in the road?
I think if you put, pull in Cornell, like, so that the back of it is at Menand Road, you'll be, that, people will see it instead of being on actual Menand Road. Or use them to block people from driving up the street and put them at Jones sideways, and then but if just no one could park, then there'd be more room to stand, and people aren't trying to stand around cars.
Cars, okay. So from Jones Court up.
But actually be a good idea for safety reasons, you might want to run that. No, we have, we have a dump truck at, at, at Cornell. So, so that car can't race up and hit the people other than but maybe, but we'll be moving lower. They won't be able to the people living.
I don't mind. I think it's, I think it's
I think just
Jones Court North or Jones Court West.
Just so there's more room for people to stand. And realistically, from that point up, there's two, maybe three houses that occasionally park in the road. So it's not like a, it's not like the bottom of the street where
In the morning, we'll put no park, we'll have Mike put no park in both sides.
Yeah. At the top. Awesome. Thank you.
Auxiliary will be selling hot chocolate from the concession stand. There will be a collection of food donations for the Sacred Heart Food Pantry and the Menand School Food Pantry. We're gonna split the
He never reached out to me.
All right, I'll follow up with him tomorrow.
More will be coming soon on the Facebook page and
We're gonna, we're gonna be going to the residents that are in Tillinghast, Menand Road, and or now on Jones, we're gonna drop those flyers for the house. Probably tomorrow, Wednesday, that's gonna have to get the permits.
I was gonna say, if you're gonna do that, like, can you just drop off two permits per house, like, and if they need additional, come get them? Because it saves you the work, you're just doing it on
We want, I do a people list of how many people got, you know, that's, you know, that way I have better control on it.
Okay, what if people photocopy it or it like
I mean, they want to get the permit, they can photocopy it anyway, so.
Just, we have more control that way. That's the only reason I do, I if I have a list of every year, we've done it and I'm done.
Okay, what's next?
Your report.
I talked about the sewer contract. I put the new updates for the South End Water Project on the website today through Thanksgiving and Friday. They will be working on Friday after Thanksgiving. They are not working on Thanksgiving. So the board has a list of all the properties that Mary Jane sent to Albany County for re-levy. We received notice today that because of the federal budget receiving another continuing resolution that our funding for, from Congressman Tonka's office, it's still in, potentially gonna be in the 2026 full year budget. But we're still not sure yet. So who's hope? It's a million bucks. See, Santa will be coming through the village on, what day is that, 2020? Starting starting at the end, what?
10 a.m.
10 a.m. No, I thought it's 9 a.m. All right.
There'll be, there's gonna be information on it.
He's got a flyer.
Yeah. Well, this is the old flyer. They are collecting toys for, toys for tots. Santa will have a special guest. And they start at Glenwood and Parks.
No, they start down there, and Glenwood is last.
Yeah, they start down in the South End.
They started south, which is gonna be a nightmare, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's not what David said.
Well, that place, he must have changed it.
We started Glenwood and then
They usually start down in the apartments.
Yeah.
And then they come back over.
And then they, they end up in the heart. At the end, yeah, so. We'll have it on the website.
The whole thing.
And and we'll put it on our Facebook page. We're going to be getting a check for $5,100 from Solar Simplified. That is the number of people we have so far that signed up for the community solar plan. That's gonna go to our parks fund. And believe it or not, I believe that's it. Rusty Reports, Lisa.
Library will be closing early next Tuesday. Guess why? Holiday train. They're gonna close at 2 o'clock because they do not want to be no one came last year while they were open and traffic was a nightmare. And the following Tuesday after the holiday train on December 7, December 2, they will be having a jazz concert by the Arch Station Quartet. This program has been paid through, bought through a grant from Albany County and the Advanced Albany County Alliance.
Nice.
And they'll also be doing a bunch of crafts and whatnot. You can see more details on their website. Here, it's right down for you, Donnie.
Oh, you're the best. You know, you're my new best friend.
Thank you. Yes, concert is right at the library. It's right at the library.
Nice. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Nick?
I'm all good.
Kevin?
Yeah, we had an offer from Stephen Harbor, who has a collection of Menand's activities, organizing folders and by date, going back Organizing folders and by date, going back to the nineteen sixties, which he's offered to donate to the village. I contacted Kevin. Kevin said we'd be glad to take them. And I was going through some of these things. They're they're okay. Okay. So uh they're a little they're a little bit of history. I think we could probably take them. Expensive does have them. Older, organized, by date, by year. It's really something. So I mean, we could easily digitize this stuff. So and Kevin said he'd love to have it. So I'd like us to accept those from Stephen.
Sure.
Okay. Um. Secondly, uh and we had uh heard about Diane Leonard, so I gave her a call today. I wanted to know if we could send her a card.
Yes, um. Uh I got a message from uh.
I'll send my own.
From Jean. Jean said that uh she's home. She's doing well and she hopes to be at seniors on Thursday.
Okay. Yeah, she has, she's.
Um one thing before, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done. That was it.
I have one thing uh to mention before Molly, please. Um. Mark Teal, who works for Chip Cronow, um who who uh. Comes to respond to almost every water break.
He's the the operator.
He's yeah, he is the uh the mechanical excavator operator and he knows his stuff. Um please keep him in your thoughts. He's currently on life support after um suffering a medical event, so um. It doesn't look good, so but. Hope for a milk miracle. Sorry about that. All right, Molly.
All right. Yes, I was gonna mention Diane, but I did talk to her and she is doing much better. Um I also had the opportunity on uh Saturday night to attend the Gamer Girl event down at the VDO uh meeting. Um the Girl Scouts went as a kind of an activity. Uh they have a great thing down there. That was my first opportunity to get down in there. Um and actually, I had a conversation with them about getting them with the seniors. There's all this studies about like them doing this, you know, hands on. Esports stuff to like with their mind and all that, so uh more to come on that.
Great.
Um the school had a very successful fall festival last week. Thank you to Bill uh for coming and dedicating some of his time to help collect the canned goods. Um they also collected bottles. Um the. School tomorrow is participating in a thing to break a world record of cup stacking. Um the record is the most people sport stacking at the same time in multiple locations. Um so the K through fifth graders are gonna participate in that and they're very excited about this. Um. The PTA has a meeting this week at six thirty. If you're interested, they have some stuff coming up that they could use some volunteers. Um one being Parents Night Out on twelve five. Um and then they're doing a staff appreciation on twelve nineteen. Um the seniors holiday party is twelve four. Hopefully Dawn got everybody their invitations and please RSVP to Jean. Um and let her know whether you're coming. Um the other thing I wanted to talk about is the possibility. I know the calendar is getting ready to come out. We're closing early Christmas Eve. We're closed on Christmas. I wanted to see how the board felt about closing Friday to give everybody kind of a extended. Week weekend, holiday weekend instead of coming in for one instead of coming in for one day uh to resume their holiday festivities. Christmas is Thursday. Yeah, so they would be off Thursday and then have to come in Friday. Um and I just thought, you know, we don't have any like water bills right now or that kind of stuff and. Might be nice to give them. Some extra time with family. I know.
What do we, operationally, what would we do on that? So thanks. Uh third Wednesday would be recycling, right? Because we always do it a day early. And so yard waste.
We're gonna send both trucks out that day anyway because.
Okay, but it's December, so we're not gonna have a lot of yard waste.
Unless it snows and then they're gonna be in there anyway.
Okay. But the DPW people, are we talking about everybody? Because the DPW people, they have a contract.
Yes.
So and then.
I was talking about the village office. But.
But it would.
So. Um if we did it, we would have to do it for everybody because I don't I don't want to I don't want to.
Yes. If you're mandatory to work, the police. Another day or for them another day. That's what that that's where the problem's gonna be. So it'll be for the whole village. I mean, that's a big deal, but it would just be another extra holiday for everybody.
Yeah.
All right, well, we have another meeting. We'll also have two meetings before that, but. Something can explore.
I'd like before we did that, let me ask Ryan and Kevin.
Yeah.
If they how they would. I don't know how that would. Yeah.
Yeah, just explore.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough.
I probably know. You do it for everybody, but it has to be. We have to offer a holiday for which they won't care about, but I mean. DPW doesn't care. It's gonna work anyway. We don't care about them. I'm joking.
True. I guarantee it'll be here.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Done.
I got nothing this time.
Oh, my God.
I didn't I didn't on purpose.
Okay. Mary Jane.
Yeah, it was a big bust. I'm excited. Um the only thing I want to know, do you want the numbers of um. The. X is related in each of it.
Yeah, whereas.
Cause I gave everybody.
Yeah, I'm gonna I'll get it in the morning. I'll put it in ten minutes.
Um and then we will be reviewing our twenty three twenty four audit with Brendan.
Yes.
Uh next meeting, so.
It's I already put.
It's in that, yes.
It was in. The last one, but I put it in.
It's in the folder for the twelve ones.
Yeah, I'm sorry on the agenda. It's gonna be the first thing.
Wants to look at it beforehand, but you can start now.
And we do have um Linda has got back to me. We have like a couple more journal entries and then we should be up to start twenty five.
Great.
I think that goes a lot quicker.
Yes.
Less expensive. I heard you. I was like, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot.
We're gonna get the floor.
Yep.
Unfortunately.
Yep. Um okay, public comment. Bill.
All right. Number one, there are two areas in Lower Menance which need repairs so badly, though it's written there, A and B. Do you with this, right?
Tom's got it.
Now, number two, I'm proud to serve serving as the official groundkeeper for. The twenty twenty five kickball season, plus I'm glad to help make the. Season successful. It's been a pleasure to serve as the official groundkeeper for the kickball. Season as well as Menace Lowly Business Board season. I look forward to doing it again for both organizations during next year.
Thank you, Bill.
Now. Now I'm requesting that the current children kids at play sign on. North side of Clifford Road at fifty two Clifford Road property. Now that's where it meets Davis Pine. Get replaced with a new larger children kids at play sign along with. Little of signposts because the current kids at play sign is small for most drive motors to read. So that's gonna need to be done.
We're working on all of that. All the signs are gonna be looked at for next season.
No. I also have observed that four road markers with white squares on them on Market Road and Canal Street got busted again. That's four out of seven. And now they're gonna need to be replaced again with new four road markers with the white squares. Now, how they got damaged or busted, I got no idea why it happened, but. We're gonna need to be done again.
Struck control is in steel teeth. They scare those.
All right.
We don't take care of.
They're tired of taking care of those.
It's no doubt he don't. Now, while the gas is pit parked, I observe two problems as well. Well. The white device in the men's room next to Pavilion Building, well, that's been beaten, but now that problem resolved, thank God. Now the paper towel dispenser men's room is literally baseball section is still was not working properly. Has that been repaired?
Yes, both offered a season.
Oh, good. I'm glad to see that happen. Now. Now, since I raised the topic of one yellow children play sign being partly blocked by tree branches on east side of North Line Avenue. Just north of twenty seven Brookside Avenue home. I'm I talked to Kevin Murphy about. And he told me that he's the one who removed those branches from that sign. But I asked if I could have his permission to mention the thing. He said it was all right, so he's the one that done it, not the public park problem. Guys, but I know they would have done it if they were able to. If they had other things to do, so. Dealing with water main break system. One more I have a personal announcement. This coming Friday, November twenty first, I'm gonna be sixty eight years old.
Happy birthday, Bill.
Thank you. I was born in Rochester, New York originally, but I've lived in this area most of my life. Including here in Menan for forty four year. Thanks for letting me speak an important topic.
Thanks, Bill.
I'm done.
All right.
Before we do that, um Steve will email me a. Comment that he wanted and he was onto the. Um he just wants to know if we're still working on. You know, he's talking to the president. And I mean, I even back in the civil town with.
Yeah, so I mean, uh operationally, we could uh. It would be premature to schedule a public hearing without the entire section of one six, is it one fifty, one sixty? Being updated, but. Uh I I think it makes sense to do everything at once and let people come and. Speak on that one issue if that's the issue of one sixty, but yes, it's still in the works.
I definitely advise you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Hi, um I have something.
Sure.
The first thing, I I'm, we live on Clifford Road and we all have new residents, two, 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 yeah. Two apartment buildings up there, so. Our street is really becoming very busy. It was already busy because here's the only street I think around here that has multi dwellings, like young people. Yeah, but apartment buildings, complexes, apartment or apartments, uh townhouses, so. We haven't had a real problem until. The people moved up the street in um in that road, two, the two uh long apartment buildings. They go forty miles an hour up our street now.
Or one.
Yeah.
Why?
We used to didn't have that problem. We're having that problem now. It's one of you all can send something out. And someone even said we were coming tonight. He said, why can't we have like those like they used to have speed bumps like that? But now they have the bigger speed bumps for pumps, so that when, you know, when the snow piles come, they don't. Hit it because there'll be signs that say, you know, lift your foul. But this is becoming a hazard now. Because when we come out of our driveway, sometimes I'll up like the end of the driveway, a guy has a truck. So we have to kind of edge out a little bit, but when you're coming thirty five, forty miles an hour up that street.
There's not a lot of time.
They're doing that. One's supposed to do what? About fifteen or something.
Are these are these young drivers or they?
We don't know.
Okay.
It's third, yeah, the 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 village speed limit currently is thirty and we're exploring reducing reducing it to twenty five. Yeah. So Dawn, will you uh call Austin and?
I'll speak to the owners and advise them, ask them if you can send out some of all the residents there.
Where's the um?
That we got complaints about their speed.
The idea about the speed bumps, though, that is not.
Yeah. It needs to move from there to.
Unfounded. That we can.
We have before.
Yeah, we have.
We own it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and people just take advantage.
Is that something we can think about? What? Speed bumps?
Pumps, um.
Pumps.
Yeah.
The problem, the problem's always been is plowing. Even County Village has a bunch of them and they have tons of problems with.
They're all installed. Thousands, not thousands, but tons. So I don't think saying that DPW can't contain that issue.
Yeah.
I think DPW is well enabled and capable.
Like just.
So I think that's not an issue.
It's a it's gonna be an issue because when they have they every year they have to repair them. So we have to constantly put money into repairing the homes. I'm just telling you it's gonna happen because that's what happened in County.
I wondered, I asked if we could move the. This this Jeep trailer back on Clifford Road. I don't I don't know when the last time it was there, but.
Do that.
It was it was there this summer, but it doesn't matter because it doesn't take flashes of people who go fast.
No, it doesn't take.
Right, I know, but it lets them know that they're speeding.
Does it know?
They know.
Well, the other option is we go for a stop sign in the middle.
So the the other issue with this with the speed hump is that. Whoever. Lives where it is isn't exactly thrilled because it.
Park over there and get some tickets.
Yep.
It's it's.
It's a thought because when you don't live on that street, you have no idea where we go from. You know, that street is very busy. We be such a small street. We have so many dwellings here, you know, that it's starting to become a problem to us. Off the street property, but just just to try to get out into that street is always very hassle.
Yeah, but people drive through our walk.
All the time. We're not even supposed to be coming through.
You guys live in the in the um.
Why would they? Why do they do that?
Like when the buses stop, they wanna take the shortcut, so they go through our driveway.
They go that's their way of going around the two buses. And I think that's.
Yeah, it's trippy.
Almost twenty five thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars just to do the payway and all of a sudden all of them are coming through now since the school is off.
And if the if the trash truck and the school buses there, you can guarantee they're gonna come.
They're gonna come right through.
I have noticed a lot more traffic coming over on turning on Menan Road or taking that right where normally there has been like no traffic cutting over to Clifford Road. I have noticed a lot more traffic coming in.
Well, I think those those two doors in houses have fifteen apartment.
Yeah.
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 And then they get ready to build another house across the street, so you know, it's just it's just gotten out of hand. The second, the second is is coming into our um parking lot where the tap first townhomes on. Your sewer hole has eroded like this much, so the people we know to go slow, when people kind of go into the parking lot. They hit that that sewer hole like like they're gonna burst a tire. People over there. Oh, it's bad. And I think it's I think it's because a lot of trucks are coming up and down our road every day because the. That the DPW.
Uh D O T.
Yeah. Lot of big trucks come up and down the street.
So the the manhole is in your driveway or is it?
Marty, what number is yours?
He's twenty six. I'm twenty, so it's closer to my house.
Okay.
It's right at it's right at fourteen when you first coming down.
Fourteen. Yeah, that's Stormdrain is, yeah, it's it's pretty well Stormdrain or sort of. It's a it's a Stormdrain.
Stormdrain.
My my complaint is that, I don't know, maybe we the village need to put some kind of drainage because we get all this water that comes in the back of us, the long and thin line there. And then behind her is like a little.
It's a pond. We have a pond about as big as this area right here. I was cutting the grass the other day. And uh well, my my last neighbor was cutting the grass the other day and it was just.
Well, Austin threw all this debris back there.
Yeah, is that recent or is that previous years also?
Yesterday.
No, like has the pond been there years before or is the pond brand?
Problems out there with the drainage, you know.
Okay.
But it's really gotten worse. I had, in fact, I had a shed back there. I bought my shed right up to where the uh, you know, where we live. We have a uh an alleyway. I had to bring it up to the alleyway because it was sinking back there because it's so swampy. In the summertime, we have mosquitoes. In the wintertime, it's not so bad, but it's still a lot of water back there. I didn't I couldn't believe how much water was back there on Saturday. When we went back there.
Yeah, and and who whose problem is it to get rid of all those weeds that I'm outside of the tent? That's not our problem, is it?
D O T.
D O T owns that.
They need to get rid of them. It's terrible back there.
Yeah. Looks like a um. Yeah, it's like a swamp.
Dawn, will you call your friend? Please.
I went and wanted to.
I will tell you that people have a ton of mosquitoes one day and you are, I even called the health department and everything. Finally, they came and they they uh came down and yeah, and they got rid of them, but they found TVs, mattresses. They found all this debris back there that people must come down the ramp. They just throw things. There was so much debris, but it's so tall. You don't see it until you actually go back there. Yeah.
Yeah, that's definitely D O T's property. Um. So. Donald call.
I'll call I'll call my buddy.
What about? Yes.
It's also erosion too that D O T.
Yeah, I'll I'll look out.
Not a bad one.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else? Diane.
Um. I walk around my neighborhood a lot, as you know, and. I listen to other people's complaints and I suggest the board meeting, come to the board meeting, blah, 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 blah. And nobody, nobody got that, but um. I'm I'm on Wolford, so Nashville's been wonderful. On Amsterdam, it's a whole different story. And I looked on the website for updates and all that stuff. Today I finally found the Lobell guy. I think his name is Greg or Craig or.
Greg.
Greg.
Greg. Yeah.
And I asked him, I said. People don't know what's going on. We we were totally were gonna be informed. You know, you're in front of a house at five oh seven, ready to dig. Couldn't you have yesterday said, you know, it just hung up, hung up yellow tape on the doorknob or something that indicates we're gonna be working at your house? I realized maybe two houses down. It took more than it did, than you thought it was gonna take, but, so at least people know where, where you're going next.
So at the bottom of the, uh, webpage, let's not stop then, there's a blog that is for each week.
Yeah, but it's supposed to be after, after.
No.
The web, when I was looking, it was ten eight, and you told me it was just updated.
Yeah, it was updated, what? Uh. Uh, it was updated earlier today.
Cause I spoke.
For the next two weeks.
I spoke to three of my neighbors, because I'm on the corner. Not expecting correctly in front of my house. But I actually, because I can't get anybody to come, so I said, what is going? So far, they run out of house, like two, every morning, the one girl runs out, her jam is at quarter to seven, because they're gonna block her in. The other woman, um, Jan, she hasn't, she had actually asked the guy, she said, should, should I move my car now so I can go to work? He says, better move it now, otherwise you're not gonna get out. So they're not informing people of anything. The other big question that everybody's asking me, and they're calling me, which I don't know why, because I don't own Hutton Street, but nobody, everybody's parking on Hutton Street. Nobody's abiding by the parking, and we're just wondering if they're not ticketing now during this construction, because we're having cars on both sides, because there's literally not enough room for them to park on one side. So now they wanna know, are they gonna get a ticket? Why they're calling me, I don't know. But they wanna know if they're gonna get a ticket, because literally there's no room to park. So are they ticketing? Are they not ticketing? Does anybody know?
Um.
Let, let me just tell you this. Friday, Brian and I and Mike Haggman had a meeting with them, and I expressed every one of those concerns with them, that they have to increase their, um, Brian.
Outreach.
Obviously, we said, you know, you gotta tell them, you can't just go that day and all of a sudden, and I told them that the parking thing, I didn't bring that up, because I found that out after the meeting, so I will, um, they're not, right now, they won't ticket somebody right now. I mean, I because it's.
So I, I can't say that the parking, alternate street parking is is suspended, because, because then we're gonna have people on both sides, and somebody's not gonna be able to get through. So that's my concern about.
Get through now, Brian, on both sides of the road. I, I had to go out, because two of my neighbors called and said, we got cars on both sides of the road. Can you go read the sign and let me know? Well, eleven's gonna be at night, I'm outside reading the sign.
Yeah.
To make sure that I was right, and.
They're, they're replacing the water, so.
Yeah, we're in a two and a half to three-year project, and it's a nightmare now, and you don't even want to go here.
So each, each, we now have a standing meeting every, is it every Friday or every, every other Friday? Where, uh, they put out a plan for the next two weeks of what, of where they expect to be, and pretty much, they've been right on where on schedule. Uh, they had a little bit of a delay, because we had a water break, and it washed out a whole lot of work. Um, and, uh, and then they had another delay for, I forgot what else, but they're pretty much on schedule, so.
The good part is that come end of December, they're actually gonna pave. They're gonna be done by December, and they're gonna finish the whole, all the after, it's gonna be paved.
Everything they've worked on is gonna be essentially stabilized for the rest of the winter.
So they're gonna stop, you won't, you won't have it after December, at the end of December, but it's gonna be it might even be before, is that?
Yeah, I think it's before Thanksgiving.
Whenever they can hold the plant open for. They're gonna do, it's just, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be finished, it's just gonna be a rough.
Right, like a rough code zone, right?
Yeah, right there.
It will be on there, at least.
November.
The main, main reason, so that work can flow, because we want.
Or should be fresh.
Doesn't get. But that's, that's the plan as of today.
I'm just upset about the communication in Loudoun. Because, when I understood it, and they were going, you have somebody there going around talking to people, answering questions, going door to door, and that is not happening.
That is, that is true, Don. That was one of the things they promised. They were gonna ensure that when they had to work in a specific area that might impact residents, they were going to let those people know.
I'll go down, reiterate that with Greg and, um.
He just emailed me.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to him again, that we have to. Yeah, that's all right.
They, they were at least gonna give them a heads up, that we're gonna let people know, we're gonna be working in this area, and.
That each street on.
Just their streets.
Just their streets.
We will communicate that again, and, uh.
Tomorrow, Mike and, I'll I'll sit down with Mike tomorrow, with Mike, Mike and I will sit down with Mike.
And Brian, where did you say that that can be seen, so I can tell my neighbors where they can find it?
Yeah, so it's, if you, on the homepage, there's South End Project. Okay, it has the original questions and answers, and then at the bottom is the, is the bi-weekly blog. Basically.
But it's, it's at the bottom, but it's not updated, and I don't know why you wouldn't put it at the top, so that you can see it.
Because.
It's not, it's not updated.
Wasn't doing us any good.
Yeah, it, it should be updated. He's emailed me earlier today and said he updated it, and maybe something related with the, the website cache, but, which is what it's it's been delayed for, uh, before, but it, by tomorrow morning, it'll be updated with this new, this new page, um. Uh, as for why it's on the bottom, that was a web design thing that will be fixed when we go to our new website, so, um. I don't, I don't know why the web architecture had to put it at the bottom instead of the top, but we'll, you can ask Sean tomorrow, please. And tell him that's creating problems with the viewing of it.
I think a lot of people don't even know that there's a website.
Yeah, yeah.
That's doubtful, so everybody who's been out there more, it's been there for.
Oh, I know, but a lot of them, so.
Yeah.
Can we know when the, the, National Bridge, wherever you are, can start coming with this Martin deck?
They already have. Mine is in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, do you, do you?
Yeah.
Do you have to make an appointment?
No, you'll get something in the, in a letter or a call. Um, they did mine, like.
Yeah, if you, you can call and make an appointment, like I didn't, and they were on my street, and they just were coming around. And it's like, they did mine, but it, it didn't take very long, so.
Yeah, people like me, I have a lock rate, so they had to come in through the back.
Right, mine's in my house, so.
So I just wanna say just real quick, I wanna thank Brian, and I wanna thank Don. Uh, I did get that situation.
Good.
Fit. John did a fabulous job, and thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Even though it took two years, but.
Good things take time.
It wasn't me that caused the two years. I wonder if everybody had heard it, could you fix it?
No, it wasn't you, it wasn't you, and it wasn't you.
All right, so, Don, you'll coordinate with Mike tomorrow and have another discussion.
Yeah.
Please.
I'm putting the no right now.
All right. Okay, anyone else? Mike?
How many properties in the town are tied into our sewage? Is it number of properties or?
Uh, one thousand and ninety-four. One thousand and ninety-four.
In the town?
In the town. That use our Manan's trunk line, yes. One thousand ninety-four addresses, yes. It's more connections than the village has itself.
In the entire village.
In the entire village.
Something's changing.
Yeah, yes. Is that it?
And they give us four hundred, they give us four dollars, and they charge their people four.
Four hundred.
Four hundred.
Yes.
Four hundred.
Yes.
We get, no, we get four. They get.
Yeah, yeah, but they charge them four.
They, they charge them four hundred.
Four hundred.
Hundred.
And we get four?
And we get four.
Oops.
My mom pays.
A three ninety-six dollar.
But that's gonna change, because it changed in the formulas to what's similar to, well, right now, they have a flat feeder. That's the word. In the next budget, they have it in, where it's gonna be like us, where they charge us percentage of the water bill. So that, that number's gonna go up.
But they'll still give us four.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
Aren't they legally obligated to be spending their water and sewer money on the water and sewer?
That's always, you can't spend.
Right, that's the only thing they can spend on, so where are they spending all the money? They're taking from these people in Loudounville. Uh, are they spending on other parts of the colony sewer and water?
Well, that's the argument, is that my mother lives right at the end of the line, so she pays Colony, even though as soon as she flushes, it hits Manan's line.
Right.
So their argument is that the three hundred and ninety-six dollars that they don't give to the village of Manans helps pay for their system, the whole system, and our argument is that they are a contributor to our system.